Meeting for March 6th. If we'd all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance?
To the Pledge of United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, there's a couple items I need to go over, but at first, if there's anybody here for Northfield Road, number one on the agenda, that has been postponed. So if anybody's waiting for that, we're postponing that till next month. Also, if there's anybody here on 4530 St. Paul Boulevard, is that tabled or is that off the...
By request of the applicant, it's been withdrawn at this time.
Okay, so if anybody's here for that reason, you don't have to stay for those two. All right, let me go over the list of things here. First off, fire exit is located on your left of this room. In the event, my right, your left. On the event of a fire, you'll be notified by an announcement. If notified, please go calmly and orderly fashion to the exits. Use either the front or the back stairs. The meetings are recorded by our Secretary, Michelle, for the purposes of a record and minutes. So please identify yourself each time that you come to the podium and speak into the microphone. The Board will follow the items in the order. They appear on the agenda. Extra copies are at the door if anybody wants one. After the case has been called, the applicant or representative shall come to the podium, identify him or herself, state their address, and then present their case. The zoning board members will then have the opportunity to question the applicant. Thank you. Then it will be open... The case will be open to the public. Anyone wishing to speak to the Board regarding the applicant... Application will come to the podium and identify themselves along with their address and any direct questions to the Board. And direct questions to the Board. Once the public input has been completed, the applicant or representative will be given the opportunity to respond to the public input. Then I will close the public hearing and continue to the next case. After all the cases have been heard, the Board will take a short recess and then return to deliberate each case in the order that the applicants are still present. So if anybody leaves, then we jump to the next one and then we do theirs at the last after they're done. No further input is allowed at this point, but you may stay and listen to the deliberation. If you wish to leave, you can find out the results by calling. The planning and zoning board department tomorrow morning after 9:00. So that being said, I think we're ready for our first one.
Thank you, Mr. LaPerry. First item on the agenda this evening will be case number ZB 1703-2. Upon the matter of request by Thomas DiPola for area variances to install a shed with less than required minimum distance from the principal structure and located forward of the building line on the street side of the corner lot on premises 3 Harrison Terrace in an R2 residential district.
Can I give these to the Board now?
Sure. Do you want to pass them?
Yeah, I gave you some additional information. My name is Thomas DiPola. I live at 3 Harrison Terrace.
Please raise your right hand, sir. Swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you.
Yes, I do.
Okay. Go ahead, continue.
Well, I'm requesting a... To put up, I hate to use the word shed because it looks like a little house. And I did a lot of research on it to make it look like a house so it doesn't look, you know, junky-looking, to put in plain English. My situation is, I understand by the town that I'm somewhat unique. The lot is... Has three front sides. So because I'm on a corner. And behind the house, we can't put the shed behind the house because there's only three feet. Now, if you're familiar with Somerville, the houses are all close to... At least in that particular area, White City there, they're all close together. So it's very difficult. We have to deal with the parking. And of course, in my particular situation, I need someplace to put my stuff. And there's no basement. There's no attic. So there's consequently, there's no place to put anything like lawn furniture or, you know, the normal things that you would have even outside that you want to stow away. So that's become a problem. Up till now, it hasn't been a problem because we actually been using the house on a temporary basis. We go back and forth. We have another house that we rent, but we're coming to the time where we're going to downsize and we're going to move everything we can in there, which is not everything, by the way, because it's a big downsize. So that's the predicament I'm in. I reviewed the situation in detail. As I said, I did a lot of research looking for a structure. This is a pre-built structure. That will be delivered on a flatbed truck. And I have to have the area prepared with gravel, crushed stone, rather, an area big enough for that to sit on so that it's level. That's the recommended type of base that it should be on. The house itself, the structure itself, is well-built. I've passed out information to you that's got the look... What it looks like. There's the elevation, what the size is. And additional to that, which you had some information before, I've given you some overviews from Google to show you how close the properties are to one another.
Sir, if I can...
Yep.
I just want to clarify because I don't think the people in the audience would know. You're asking for two separate things with this shed. Is that correct? First thing that you're asking for is, excuse me, you want the shed three feet closer to your house than the code allows. And that's probably because you want to get it as far away from the street and the sidewalk as possible.
That's correct.
Okay. So you want it to be closer to your house so to keep it away from everyone else. The second thing is, this is the only space on your property where it'll even fit, where a shed will fit. And you just want it there because if you look at the chart, there's no space behind your property, behind your structure. It's the only place it'll fit.
Exactly.
So you want a fence in the only... I mean, sorry, a shed in the only place it'll fit as close to your house as possible.
Right.
Okay.
I don't know what is the code... How far away from the house does it have to be?
It says it's supposed to be six feet away from your house and you're asking that it's located...
Yeah, I'm trying to give enough space between the sidewalk and the shed itself is what I'm trying to do. Yes.
Thank you.
To answer your question. So in this, what I just passed out now, over the weekend, I passed out a little question from my neighbors. I only went to six because I tried to get the ones that were closest to me. The man behind me, which is... His name is on that, what I just passed around. His name is Zimmerman. He lives directly behind me now. He... And behind him is the next person. Her name is Kathleen. And then across the street, there's two people that would be viewing the shed. And they both said that they supported me putting there. And if you look at how I designed it, I have it set up that they can see exactly where the shed is going to be positioned. And what I plan to do in the front of the shed is to make like a little courtyard with a fence so that way it'll make it even look nicer in that area with flowers and shrubbery. So that's pretty much the reason. And I know I would have liked to have even a little bit bigger one. It sounds like it's big, 10 by 12. But once you put in the bikes and the lawn equipment and, you know, all of those things, it's going to take up the space fairly quickly. So I'm within the lot requirement. In other words, the footprint of the lot. That's why I kept it at 10 by 12.
My question is about the shed itself.
Yes, sir.
This is a good picture of it?
That picture is the elevation. There's a picture that I passed around there that's actually a picture of the shed itself.
Yeah, okay. So you got... There's two main doors on that one side.
The front side, towards Rock Beach.
Okay, that'll be facing Rock Beach.
Correct.
This part.
Correct.
I just want to make sure. There is no room to turn it around anyway, right?
Well, you could... I could have the doors actually put on the other side because they're going to build it. They'll build it and deliver it to my specifications.
Okay, I just wondered about that.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? I do have some folks from the neighborhood. 439 Rock Beach Road, Wendy Pike. She...
She's right across the street.
She's in support of the shed. Kathleen Brink is 15 Harrison Terrace.
Yeah, she's two houses down on the north side.
She's also in support. Tom and Kristy Zimmerman, 9 Harrison Terrace.
Directly behind.
They're also in support. Patricia Diamond, 431 Rock Beach. She's in support. And that's it.
The neighbor that's east of me, there's no one living there at the present time. There was, I believe it was a foreclosure. And there's somebody there working on it, but I don't know, you know, if that's the owner or somebody that was hired to rehab the house because it's in pretty bad shape.
Any other questions from the Board members? Okay, that being said, we'll open it up to input. Anybody here in favor of the shed, come up and speak? Is there anybody here to speak against the shed? Come up and speak. And we got a cheering section. And if there's anybody who just wants to ask about it in reference to where it is. Okay, that being said, we'll move on to our next case. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Next item on the...
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
We have to declare the public hearing part closed.
Sorry, yes, correct.
Sorry to interrupt you.
Good catch. Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1703-4. Upon the matter of request by Thayer Custom Homes for an area variance to construct a new single-family dwelling exceeding maximum permitted height on premises 83 Rudman Drive in an R2 residential district.
I'm Sonia Russell. I'm here speaking on behalf of Thayer Custom Homes. Do you want my physical home address?
Please.
16 Homestead Drive, Fairport, New York, 14450.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Raise your right hand.
Okay.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. I just... Just for clarification, on our application, there is no owner listed. Property owner's not listed. It does have applicant as Thayer Custom Home.
Yes, they're the company that just purchased the home to renovate it and to resell it.
Okay, so it is... So they're the owners?
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, continue.
So the home that we're purchasing, we... Original idea was to purchase it and renovate it. The foundation of the home is totally basically collapsing so we cannot renovate it. So we have to completely rebuild it from scratch. The current code calls for 24, I believe, and a half height. But new builds, the caliber of home that we're building is going to be almost 3,600 square feet. That doesn't fit that... The style of the structure. So we're looking to at least have nine feet on the first floor and nine feet on the second floor. Preferably, we'd love 10 feet on the first floor and nine feet on the second floor. But we're willing to try to compromise somehow. But basically, what the current code calls for, we couldn't build a home for this... Of this caliber. We're trying to at least get 26 feet in... Oh, in six and a quarter. 26 feet, six and a quarter. That doesn't make sense. Oh, I think it's supposed to be 26 feet and a quarter.
Looking at the elevation, we've got it highlighted. The front part of it or the... On the bottom part of the slope?
Mm-hmm.
Is that going to be garage?
That's garage space, yep.
Okay, so we're not worried about that height, right?
Nope.
We're worried about the height of the building and because it's on a slope, it varies from the front part of the house or the part next to the garage to the back part. I guess we would say the left side to the right side.
Yeah, to the right side. So we're... That part of the... That's the last house on the end of the street. Behind us is all hill. So we're not interfering with anyone's view. We actually have to... The current... The setback, I mean, we have to go further for the setback to get this home. And we're also going to be... It's not going to be facing directly towards the water. It's going to be facing, I would say, call that more... Maybe east? What's the direction of that?
Kind of...
Well, it's not really going to be going north. It's going to be northeast or northwest.
Northwest.
Northwest, I think.
Yep. Yeah, northwest. And there's basically nothing behind it?
Nope.
Obstructed?
Just trees, just woods.
If someone were to build a home further up Rudman, the next...
You can't build... I mean, it's all hill behind us.
Right.
So you couldn't build there. I mean, the level above us is Titus Extension.
Right.
So that all has current homes there.
Okay.
And this is way... The drop is at least a good few hundred feet. I mean, I would say 500 feet.
So it wouldn't be obstructing anybody's...
No, nope, not at all.
Excuse me, Chairman. I'm getting a note from our technical folks that we need you to speak into the mic.
Oh, sorry.
I apologize.
No, no, you're all set. It was actually our fearless leader. He needs to...
Sorry.
It's okay, thank you.
Any questions from the Board members?
Did you ask any of the neighbors? Ask around, see if anybody had any issues?
Diana went by around.
And what did they say?
The neighbor next to us said she had no problem. If anything, it would improve the neighborhood. And then kitty-corner where the house is, they said it was fine. And the third person I talked to was like directly across the street.
Thanks.
They saw me put the hearing sign up and they all come with, "What's the hearing all about?"
You actually have the driveway coming out on Shore Drive and not on Rudman, I see.
Yeah, the way how that's set up, it's really on shore.
Right.
But the address is Rudman because the house next to it, the address is shore. So I'm not really sure how they came up with that address.
Does anybody you know drive up and down Rudman?
You really can't... Well, there is a house there. There is a house there, but I don't know how they get up and down there because it's pretty scary.
Right.
I wouldn't chance it.
That explains why I couldn't find it.
Yeah.
They had to go all the way down.
Yeah, because you have to go from Titus Ave Extension and take it down to Shore. And at Shore, you make a right and it's a house right in the quarter. So it's really Shore Drive. But then that one part of Rudman comes down, that really scary road. And that's... They're putting it on there, but it's not really on there. It's really on Shore. So it's kind of weird, yeah.
Is the current driveway there?
The current driveway's there, yep, yep.
Same spot. Looks nice.
It's going to be a gorgeous house.
Any other questions from anybody on the Board?
I have an easy one, I think.
Okay.
Under the variance, I'm seeing two and a half or two foot five inches to five foot three inches for the variance. Why is there such a difference? Is that because of the slope?
I would say it's probably because of the slope because we... We're going to be... The current setback, I mean, the setback of it, we're going to be going into the hill more. So, I mean, because the current house is so close to the road. So I think... Let me look at the picture. So the way how the house is...
Yeah, it's because of the slope.
Can I chime in? Yeah, it's from the... If you look at the front elevation of the house, there's a bit of a slope going from one end of the house to the other. And so the variation in variance is actually just accounting for the changing height as measured from the ground at the front elevation. So if you're on the side near the garage, closer to the garage, the distance from the... Where the foundation comes out of the ground to the midline of the roof, which is how we measure height per code, it's going to be a little bit higher than on the portion furthest away from the garage where the land slopes up a little bit.
And if you... I'm sorry, if you even look at the side elevation, you could see where some of that slope is. And if you go to the back, you can see it's going to be a walkout basement. So you could see how the slope just varies a little bit from all around the house.
Okay.
Okay.
I just wanted a little clarification on that.
No, that's a good one.
Any other questions from the Board members? Okay, let's move on to having... Thank you. Is there anybody here that would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here that would like to speak not in favor of this application? Is there anybody here that just has questions about the application? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing on that one.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1701.3. Upon the matter of request by Stan Tech Consulting Services acting as agent for Providence Housing Development Corp. for area variances to construct one-two-story 30-unit senior housing apartment building with less than required front, side, and rear setbacks with less than required parking and lot area on premises 4225 Calva Road and area variances to construct one-three-story 40-unit senior housing apartment building with less than required side and rear setbacks with less than required parking and lot area and exceeding maximum building height on premises 4250 Calva Road in an R5 residential district.
Come on up.
Board members. Thomas Palumbo, Stan Tech Consulting Services.
Do I need to have this gentleman swearing in again seeing as how he was sworn in the first time?
No, that's not necessary.
Thank you. Continue.
Seeing we're at a new public hearing, I'm just going to kind of do a quick kind of run-through on the project. So as we have talked in the past, the project's an outgrowth of the Saint Saloms Apartments, which is now eight years old. That's 39 units in the primary apartment building. As we said, there's a really strong demand for the senior housing. We have a good waiting list at that site. Very low turnover at that existing building. The tenants... As tenants age in place, we found a real need for more services there. And Providence does not really provide those services. So the opportunity to redevelop both the Saint Saloms Church property and the Durand United Church of Christ offered, you know, additional senior housing to answer the need and an opportunity to add supportive services resulting in development of partnership with Saint Anne's. The opportunity to expand the income base to permit rental units to seniors whose incomes are greater than 50% AMI and less than 80% AMI. So through the process, they've... Saint Saloms has commissioned a market study. We've working with the master plan. And through the process, we've gone through both the rezoning application process to rezone the property to R5 as well as the planning process to obtain a final site plan approval. In addition to that, we've also met with Monroe County DOT and looked at any of their requirements. So the proposal is noted, 70 units of senior living. 30 are located on the west side at the old Durand United Church site. And 40 units will be located on the east side of Calva Road. In addition, on the east side, there's 3,000 square feet of space that is for Saint Anne's to provide space for more community services, senior community services.
Well, can I ask a question?
Yep.
What are those community services going to be?
It's mostly day-type services.
Like adult daycare facility?
Yeah, could be that.
Okay. Do you have an idea how many people are going to be coming and going for that?
Most of them will come in in small vans, things of that nature, or drop-offs. I think there's 20, 25 people planned.
The apartments, and you might have already said this, but the age limit, it starts at 55?
55, yeah. So working through the master plan and everything and the DOT's request really to eliminate curb cuts on Calva Road, we kind of now have ourselves situated with the buildings addressing the road corridor as this kind of more of a traditional village, traditional neighborhood approach, which really puts us into the variances for the setbacks. That, between that and the shape of these lots. The addition of Saint Anne's to operate the supportive service services really kind of pushes us to the third floor because of the extra space that they need for that service and that height variance. We believe that space is really critical for the enjoyment of the tenants. It also serves another service for local seniors as well. As designed, the building will be fully sprinkled in compliance with all existing codes related to fire safety. Design changes have been made to accommodate concerns of Chief Champion of the Point Pleasant Fire District. We feel the project meets this goal for providing a safe home for all its tenants and residents. With regards to the parking, Providence believes that its design[1638.18] With regards to the parking, Providence believes that its design will provide ample parking for the proposed use. We've provided a study of the parking at the existing site, and now we have two more samples of parking which would just really support this, what we found, validates what we found at St. Salomes. One of those is a county DOT parking analysis that was, or county planning, excuse me, parking analysis that was done in 2007. And the other is an analysis that home leasing has done on a bunch of their properties as well, to really look at how much parking they're building versus how much they're actually So with that, I think it's really, if you've gone out there and seen the parking, I think it really kinda shows that, and I know a lot of the members of this board have done So, for these reasons, you know, we've requests that we get these variances approved.
In reference to, I guess, I think the chief might be here tonight, I don't know. Okay, there he is in the back, I guess we'll have him come up in a moment. But parking was a consideration of mine, and also, at the last meeting, talking about the community service portion of the building, you know, obviously some of these folks are probably dropped off, but the curiosity is, will any of them drive their own car?
It's really anticipated that everyone's gonna be dropped off.
Well, and we would hope that, I mean, not that we want them that way, but we would hope that that would be the case. But I still have a, I still have a large concern with the number of cars based on a 55 and older clientele, and your argument, or your reasoning for not having enough parking spaces were the fact that some of these people stopped driving at an older age. And from experience, my mom is in a, they're an independent living place, and at 85 she just gave up her car. And most of the people I know that she knows have their own cars. So the question, and my worry, is the fact that we are under parking spots. That's number one. And now, number two, knowing that we're gonna be bringing in buses, which again, this didn't come up in the previous meeting, but doing a little more homework, and also knowing that you're gonna have, you're gonna have other employees other than the employees for the apartments, you're gonna have, I would think, a handful of employees running this facility, this community center. And my worry is, where are they gonna park?
Well, so, we've been trying to give you more data on this. I do have the results, so the existing St. Salomes site is 55 and over. That currently, they demand a .62, okay? So, of the 39 units. From the home leasing stuff that was done in 2016, they have various, whole variety of, most of these are starting at 55, and they average out at .64 spaces per unit. I could share this, if you'd like.
Sure.
You can see the bottom of this, where we got it, is the person who's giving it to us, in red, is averaging this.
Thank you.
Oh, you're right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And did you mention a second study by the county?
Sure.
Could you explain that one for us, please? Excuse me.
I have just the sheet that has the results. I don't have the entire report. Oh, a copy for you on this.
All right.
So in 2007, county planning did a survey of multiple users, I think within and outside of the county as well, to get as many applicants, many respondents back as they could. And it's for, it was for a whole variety of land uses. Part of those land uses are like senior housing, nursing homes, senior housing, senior citizen residential communities, senior living and care facilities. So they have a variety of results from that. So, kind of what they've seen is one-half, or .43 to .67 spaces per resident, or you could say per bedroom, something like that. So, I can enter that as well.
I'm just adding, I'm not just basing around.
In red, on the backside, I highlighted what, how they kinda presented it, and I just kind of converted it back to spaces per bedroom.
And to confirm, the third data point that you gave us was the existing?
That's correct.
Apartments, and those are at a point, you said 6.3?
The average is .63.
And the parking that you will be providing for the new proposed product, project, rather, what is that number? Wasn't it point, I don't know if it was .75?
.75 is what we're looking for.
Okay, so that'd be more than?
That's correct.
These three points you gave us, thank you.
Yeah. So if we looked at the, at the 79 units, 4250 and 4260 Culver, at points, I used the higher one, the home leasing results of .64, they would need, we would need 51 spaces. We're providing 60 some. So that's, you know.
How many apartments are in the existing building?
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine?
Yeah.
And you're, and there's 40 units, and the other ones was?
So, you know, we have been, we wanna make sure we've got parking for our folks as well. So, it's kinda...
Is this, I know I mentioned it to you before about the height concern and the third floor, and we're gonna ask the chief to talk a little bit about it. But is the concern, concern with the project, the other gentleman spoke about, was it not being feasible if it was less units, or you would have to reconfigure the building? But if you didn't have the community service building, and it made those apartments, it could alleviate a little bit of a problem?
Well, that does a couple of things. It does, it still doesn't get us the full number of units we need.
Have you taken a pen to it, what it would give you?
I mean, if we were to get rid of the community services building and put, you know, try to go to a two-story layout there, we still wouldn't get the right number of units. Also, I believe there's some revenue coming in from the market.
Could you talk about the features that the community services facility provides to residents that might be living in the units that are proposed?
Sure.
My name is Mark Greisberger. I'm the executive director of Providence Housing, co-developer with St. Anne's. The community service building and the community service function is vital to this project. The one thing we've learned from running senior projects is, people age in place, they need more services. They're not readily available. This project was designed to bring services to the residents, not of our project, but also to the community as a whole. We are not busing people in there. People will be coming from the outside, will be driven there by family members or taxi or whatever, but there's no busing plan at this point, never has been. Community services will be adult daycare. It will be wellness programs relating to exercise, nutrition, opportunities for socialization. These are all part of the gamut of services that can and will be offered to both the residents of the community and members of the community at large.
The other building that you built initially?
Yes, sir.
There's no community center in that one, right?
There is a community space.
Right.
There's a kitchen, there's a public area, but there are no services in that building on a organized basis.
Same type of building as this is, just without the?
It doesn't have that 3,000-square-foot extension where services can be organized and provided.
I know this doesn't have anything to do with the building, but who's providing these services, or you're contracting with?
St. Anne's is a full partner in this development, they're a co-developer. They're gonna be leasing, the 3,000-square-foot is being financed independently from the tax credits, and they will lease that space, which is how we pay for that part of the They have nutritionists on their staff, they have dieticians, people who do our exercise programs, and they run adult daycare.
Yeah, I'm a little bit familiar with the adult daycare services. I have a relative that runs a program like that, and they utilize buses to bring people in and out. So, I mean, I, there are some family members that drop off and pick up, but majority of them...
St. Anne's has never mentioned in a conversation with me that they have an organized transportation service that picks up people from their homes and brings them to the...
Are there public, I mean, are there RTS bus stops along?
Yes.
Culver Road?
Absolutely, there are.
All right.
Part of the other question that had come up from the neighbors was the fact of the height. Obviously, they're objecting to the height. Some of those folks might be here tonight to speak about it. But again, there could be some alternatives, but based on the conversations we've had with you, you're not looking at any alternatives.
We're pretty far down the road. We've obviously got site plan approval, we spent a lot of money on design. My problem doing affordable housing is I have restricted rents from HUD. I can't raise rents to cover increased costs. My rents are fixed. Now, they get adjusted annually to 3%, but you're talking a major redesign of this project. I know what I've spent so far to get to this point, to redesign the whole thing, I can't justify it based on the rent structure, the affordable rent structure. This project is unique because we will restrict rents. We will not be able to raise rents without the consent of HUD and Housing and Community Renewal of the state of New York. We have to give them an annual budget, they approve our rent increases. If we make a little too much money one year, they don't give us rent increases. So we're limited in what we can do in terms of redesign at this point in time.
Well, okay. I just, I find it unfortunate that you would not have a little bit of flexibility on it because, you know, again, there are some outstanding concerns, and I don't know that we've met them all yet.
Well, I will tell you, if you talk about a little flexibility, I think we exhibited a little flexibility when we met with the planning board, and we made design changes to better integrate the project into the community.
I guess...
A little flexibility is going from three floors to two while trying to maintain the supportive services? That's where, I can't say that's me being a little unflexible, that's me saying I can't do it because I don't, there's no money in this project for that type of major redesign.
I guess, what came first, the chicken or the egg? I think maybe bringing this in front of the zoning board earlier would have been a prudent way to do it, but...
I have one question about the story issue. I thought that a primary concern of the third story issue had to do with fire safety.
Well, it is fire safety, but it's also a parking issue for me. I mean, there's two. There's the safety, and then there's the parking. With a community that's 55 and older, if there happens to be two people living in an apartment, most 55-year-olds that I know of have two cars. Husband and wife have a car, and we're not taking that into consideration.
It's not been our experience at the existing St. Salomes project or any of the other senior projects that we operate.
I guess I wanna just break apart these two issues, because if one of the issues is the fire safety, I think the chief is gonna be speaking to that shortly.
Yes, yep, yep.
On the parking issue, I mean, it seems like the dispute is, you've given us, I think, three data points to suggest that it's going to be under .75 spaces. And if I can recall, two meetings ago, on the west side of the road where there is snow storage, we talked about the ability to convert that into potentially six or seven additional spaces as needed.
We do, we would be giving up green space. We have the capability of...
I'm just trying to, I don't wanna cut you off, I just wanna streamline this. So, do I understand that's the position, those data points, you can add it additionally there? And then, and then you have the concern that, in your experience, that it's just, you don't really, you're not sure if that's enough, you're not convinced, and I think other people here probably aren't convinced as well. I just wanna make sure I understand the real crux of the dispute that we're having right now about the issues with this. That's really what we're, that's what we've narrowed it down to, is that right? Unless anyone else has anything? I just wanna make sure I focus it so I can know where we all stand, all right?
Well, you know, I do wanna hear the chief's opinion about all the fire.
Without any further ado, then.
Okay, all right. I did reopen, it's a public hearing, so I wanna talk to anybody, invite up in favor of the project, if they would step up, please, and step up to the mic, yep?
Sir, if you have a question, no, we have to go to the mic, sir. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
First off, my name is Richard Bondi. Do I have to get sworn in?
No.
Okay. My written, my name is Richard Bondi. I live on Wakona Avenue, which is on the north side of the building that they're putting up. My speaking right now is not gonna step on the gentleman in the corner. He's the chief of Point Pleasant. My speaking is the driveway that they are gonna shut down on Culver Road. There's a driveway on Culver Road that will be closed to the entrance to their parking area of their building right now. I was told that they're gonna put another driveway on Wakona Avenue, which is my street. It is a two-lane street, and the problem exists is that when snow or any other thing happens, when Mestrela has a party night or something, they park on both sides of the street during the day. We have bowling from Parkview. The question is, is that he stated that they are gonna be bringing in buses and moving vans. When the people come into this place, they bring U-Hauls. You cannot get down the road. You cannot get into the driveways. The only large access to these vans was the entrance on Culver Road. So now I'm just saying, any vans, any large trucks, especially a tractor-trailer that goes to Mestrela's, when they plow snow, the snow from Mestrela's goes up against the walks where they were going to be planning to put their two driveways. If you're gonna have more cars and more people, and the only two ways, the only way to get out of that parking lot is, on Wakona, we have a problem. It's only two lanes, and it's only about 200 yards long. It runs from Culver Road to Lodge. And that is my main concern, because I live there. And I know that people, I think I have people here that live there, they're gonna be coming out of that parking lot, and with the snow the way it is right now, they're stacking it eight foot high, and they're having trouble getting out of the parking lot now with the one building. If you're gonna put another building up there, we're gonna have a problem. The other question I have is that the building that they're gonna be putting on the other side, which is a three-story building, they're gonna be taking the driveway off of Culver Road also, which means there won't be any access off of Culver Road. If I'm right or wrong, the gentleman can say I'm wrong, they're gonna be removed.
The building that's gonna be across the street at the, at 4225, that's a...
Yeah, that's a three-story?
No, that's a two-story building.
Well, don't matter, that driveway's going too. There's a driveway that's on Culver Road, that one will be missing too. The only way you'll be able to get into that building is by going down Dewberry. And then you're gonna have to make a right-hand turn to go down a side road that runs to Birchwood, I think. That street is about one lane wide. And the only access to get out of that parking lot would be through a back driveway to the access road between Dewberry and Birchwood. That is my main complaint. I'm speaking of traffic that you're gonna be putting into this place. You have enough problems now with the traffic on Culver Road, let alone putting up a 60-unit or a 90-unit. You're gonna be adding a lot of cars to Culver Road, and I don't know how you're gonna get on there or anything like that. So that's my main concern, was Wakona, and the other side roads and the access to these two places. That's all I had to say.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else to step right up?
Joe Haddon, 60 Dewberry Drive. I really don't have anything planned for talking tonight, but the way it is, I think I should make a few statements. I should make a few statements. One is the existing building. I don't know what kind of parking they have there now, but if you put the new building in, is that going to take away a lot of the parking from the existing building? Now, we may be even shorter. About two, three weeks ago, we had the fire department come over to the existing building with a problem, and they also had four police cars that had to come in there, and it was a problem with what they have. So, I think we really got to think about this parking business.
Sir, when you say it was a problem, over here, sir, over here. When you say it was a problem, what do you mean?
Well, you got four police cars, you got the fire trucks, and they were all trying to get in there, plus all the people that had cars trying to get in through there, and it was just, it was just hard to get in and out.
Was anyone prevented from getting in and out?
Uh, no, not that I know of.
And do you know if there was an issue with the police or the fire department getting to the person who was in need?
Uh, no, they were able to get in there, but that was because...
It creates additional congestion and stuff.
That was because of the coming off of Culver Road.
Okay.
Now, if they come out the end, I don't know, you know, what kind of problem we would have.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'm really concerned about that, but I don't, we set variances, I mean, we set numbers, the town sets numbers and everything else, and I think we should stick with the numbers rather than messing around. The numbers were made for a certain reason. The town has made them for a certain reason, and now we turn around and go, well, maybe, maybe this will be all right for three cars instead of six. You know, I just, I just don't want to go. Last month meeting, there was, if I remember right, and if I heard it right, I was watching on TV, they need two acres of land in order to do what they want to do correctly, and you've only got one acre? Let's wake up. Maybe they need to go to a different spot. That's all I have to say, thanks.
Thank you.
Can I, just as a point of clarification for folks watching at home, the purposes of the zoning board is to grant relief from the code requirements. That's one of this board's main functions. So, just the fact that somebody makes application for a variance, that's, the legal obligation of this board is to review those. And I just, another point I'd like to share is, the current zoning, Seabreeze in this area, or in this case, the zoning in Seabreeze, the commercial properties up and down Culver, is the same zoning as all the properties along East Ridge Road. And so, there is going to be disparity about what can happen and where. And so, here, especially in Seabreeze, there are going to be opportunities where almost anything you'd want to do, you would need a variance for. On the smaller lots, that's, that's pretty typical. And it just, as a point of information for the board, I feel like I want to make sure I'm providing staff information.
Ms. Ivers, I just have a follow-up question on that. I understand that the applicant did go to the town board and asked the town board to rezone this area. Could you just explain what the town board decided and how they changed those number rules for this to accommodate this property?
Yeah, so, the properties were, because they were churches prior, and churches were allowed in R1, the underlying zoning originally had been R1. Church use made sense under that zoning code. The applicant made...
And R1 means single-family homes or churches or libraries?
Or libraries or fire stations, things along those lines. But it's a, the applicant made application to request a zoning change to accommodate the multifamily R5. And considering that, they looked at a wide range of, of issues in, that you would factor in making a zoning change. The location on Culver Road was a major factor, the fact that there's services available to serve a development like this, and that it was in keeping with the kind of development that you find up and down Culver Road. That was what, some of the things that the town board looked at. And in following that, the planning board and looking at the site plan, looked at a wide variety of site plan issues, including traffic study, including the layout of land, and trying to balance the needs of the building with preservation of green space and landscaping. And they made some recommendations based on those kinds of factors. And so, now, the application comes to this board for the relief that's needed in the zoning code.
And do you know anything more about the traffic study that was performed?
Um, they, yeah, the, I mean, the applicant certainly could speak to this, but that was one of the issues that had to be addressed at the town board level and at the planning board level for the purposes of environmental review. And it's also something that this board would potentially have to take into consideration is that the, the development doesn't produce, with, there's a slight increase in, in the number of trips generated, which is how traffic studies typically look. The lane, the closure of access on Culver Road is actually recommended and preferred by Monroe County DOT, and that's a Monroe County DOT roadway. And so, the town is really obligated to implement and follow the recommendations from MCDOT. The reason the closure is, it's, it's really close, connected to another intersection along there, and so, you're trying to minimize conflict points along Culver Road. And so, all those issues would have been looked at with respect to traffic. The, the senior housing facilities are generally identified with less trip generation, less vehicle travel, certainly not during peak hour times as well, and that's the other factor that is considered in the review of, of traffic analysis. Again, that was all documented in the applications that were before the town board and the planning board for site plan review and the rezoning.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll continue. Anybody else? Come on up.
Mrs. Chairman, should we have them line up if they want to speak for or against, or...
Um, sure, if you'd like to line up. We're going to ask Mr., or Chief Champion to speak at the end, but if there's anybody else that would like to speak, line up, take, yep, go ahead, hop in line, one at a time, please. Go ahead, your name, ma'am?
My name is Norine Di Pasquale. I live in the St. Salome Apartments, and I appreciate the opportunity. I know they need this kind of housing, and I want everyone to have a chance, but there are many problems here. Parking is number one, and it's just not going to be adequate. And when there are gatherings at one of the community centers, or for some reason, there's an overflow of parking, I'm afraid people will park on the side street, park on Culver Road, which is not safe. And snow removal would be really difficult, because right now, when there's a lot of snow, we move our cars to the other half of the parking lot so they can clear where we usually park. And that needs to be done so that no one gets stuck, and people can walk between cars to get in their car and not fall down. And there would be no place to do that. And when snow, when there's a lot of snow, it is piled up right next to that exit that's proposed, the one entrance and exit, and you wouldn't be able to see around that pile of snow at all, no way. And then, the other thing is, of course, the issue of the firefighters. And I was told that at the last meeting, it was discussed that maybe they could buy more nets so people could jump from the third floor. Well, we have a lot of disabled people and a senior population. I couldn't climb out my window with my dog in my arms and jump, and I'm sure there are many others who could not. It's just too dense, this plan, way too dense, and there are a lot of parking and safety issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I was coming up to speak about the same thing.
Your name, ma'am?
I'm Karen Garrish. I also live at St. Salomes, and there's a couple of us that go out, when it is snowing, we go out, we clean the cars, because there are people that cannot get out there and clean their car, and this is so we can move the cars up to where it's already been plowed. So, then, when he comes back, he could come and plow along the building, and then we have to bring all the cars back. But the problem is, if there's, there's not going to be any place to move these cars to so we can get cleaned out. That's going to be a big concern. I know we haven't any snow, but it's coming, so that's a big concern. And also, it was, I did come home the night, there was a big incident with all the police cars, the fire truck, the police chief, whatever. There was, it is, the first responders, they come in and they're just all over the place, and it is a problem trying to get in to park your car if, if there's a big emergency. But that can be anywhere. I mean, that could be on your street, so, but my problem was the parking and the snow removal. Where are you going to put the snow? I mean, you know, because I usually put it up there, and then we move the cars back, and then, you know? So, this is my concern, is where are we going to park our cars for snow?
Thank you.
Ms. Garnish? Ma'am? Ma'am, I didn't get your address, I'm sorry.
4260 Culver Road. I'm a resident of St. Salome.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my, my name is Carol Panapinto. I live at 135 Birchwood Drive. I had some questions about the, you know, the fire equipment that I guess the fire chief will probably be answering, so I'll, I guess I'll leave them for now. But I, as the other gentleman brought up, even though the address for the, and I'm going to talk mostly about the, the apartment proposed on the west side of Culver Road, because that's going to affect me the most, even though it's listed as Culver Road being the address, the entrance and the way the apartments are going to face is on Birchwood Drive. So, really, for practical purposes, it is Birchwood Drive. And so, it's a very narrow street, I mean, very narrow, and right where the entrance to the apartment building is going to be, you have to turn off of Culver Road onto Dewberry, and then you make a right-hand turn, and then you go a couple hundred feet, and then Birchwood makes another 90-degree turn, and it's right in between those two 90-degree turns where people are going to be entering and exiting the parking lot. So, that's another thing that, that's an issue. Visibility is not that great, but, you know, but when church services were going on, you knew, okay, there's going to be coming, people coming in and out of the parking lot on Sunday morning, and when there was meetings on Friday nights, you, you kind of accounted for that. But I, you know, I think that's sort of a safety thing, is the, you know, they have to look both to the left and to the right for people coming kind of in blind spots at them. So, that's one issue. Okay, so, I said that the street's very narrow. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. Let's see. I know the, the study that the gentleman talked about, as far as how much parking spaces were needed, I think some of the data he referenced was also, you know, related to assisted living facilities and nursing homes, where those people definitely are not going to be driving very much, but, you know, somebody 55 is more than likely going to be driving. So, I'm not sure I, I'm on board with the, the parking situation, and they were talking about getting more parking by getting rid of the snow removal spots. So, I don't know where they're going to put the snow then. Are they going to have trucks come in to take it somewhere? I don't know what the plan is on that. And then, there, there is, this is something that I don't think anybody's brought up, but there's a house that's right next to the proposed parking lot, and they were talking at the last meeting about filling in the parking lot, because there's a dip to go down into it. So, if they fill that parking lot in, what's going to happen to the house? I mean, is the, with drainage? I mean, I don't know what the, the plan is for that, but, you know, that doesn't, doesn't sound great for the guy that lives there. But I don't know, I don't know what the, what the plan is, so I just thought I'd ask about that. Let's see. Oh, and as far as, there actually was a fire, house fire on Birchwood Drive, was it Saturday or Sunday? I'm trying to remember.
Yesterday.
Yesterday, okay, yeah. So, and from experience with, you know, when the church had things going on, and when there were meetings going on, people would park on Birchwood Drive, because there wasn't enough parking in the parking lot, and they would park on both sides. Well, when the fire truck came down and the other vehicles, you know, they needed that spot to, to access that, that house that was on fire, and they did a great job putting it out very quickly, but, you know, you don't, you know, I guess we're, we're back to the, talking about the parking. But, and also, the question I had, I guess, was if there was, if you needed to get to a, you know, a third story, which I know is not an issue on, on this side of the street, but if you had to wait, I saw how quickly that fire, you know, spread. It was amazing. And to have to wait for another truck to come from Ridge and Culver, that can make a big difference, so, for the people in the, on the other side with, in the three-story building. Okay, so, let's see, was there anything else? I guess, I guess that's about it for now, but then, thank you for...
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Step right up.
Betty Ann Mullins is my name, and I live at St. Salome's Apartments. And just to get here, I mean, at times, even now, it's hard to get out of, to get onto Culver Road, and there's been other times, and, you know, I'm, I'm older and more cautious and nervous, and there's a lot of traffic there as it is right now. So, it's the parking and the safety of this three-story high building. I mean, it's, those are my concerns too. That's about it, I guess.
Thank you. I guess, is there anyone else that would like to speak on behalf or against the project? And then, if no one else, I'd like to ask the Chief Champion.
I was just going to say, Mr. Chairman, the, the chief can certainly speak if he'd like to. We can't necessarily compel him to speak, so some of the questions may be better directed at the fire marshal, who's also here. But if Chief Champion would like to speak, he certainly can, but the fire marshal may be the appropriate one to answer many of these questions. And I think for purposes of the record, we should hear from the fire marshal as well.
Okay. I, I do know we, you know, last meeting, we did request Chief Champion, so I didn't not let him speak?
Oh, he certainly can. I'm just saying, if he doesn't choose to, he doesn't have to.
Okay.
How you doing? My name's Jeff Champion, chief of the Point Pleasant Fire District. Back in January, I came to the board to express some concerns about the building, and I have since met with the town, with Mark and Tony from Providence, or, excuse me, Tom from Providence. Lot of discussions. They've, they've been very gracious in working with me with some of my concerns. They know some of them, they now know other concerns they weren't aware of with the existing property of 4260. That is a huge factor in this development. Just to, just to answer a couple questions and concerns that some of the public just brought up quickly.
What, what are you talking about, 4260?
4260 is the current building there, and that would play a huge part in access with the building of 4250. And that's why that compounded some of my concerns that we've talked, and there has been pre-existing problems with 4260 that Providence wasn't aware of. So, this has actually helped open up a line of communication with myself and them.
Is that St. Salome?
Yes, that's St. Salome, so I'm sorry. I refer to it as 4260.
Do you want me to ask what those issues were?
Just, just a lot of, just some property issues, calls, various calls that we go on, maintenance issues. We're, we're there a pretty good amount of time. We have a pretty good call volume with that property.
How often?
Uh, oft...
Excuse me, just as a point of record, is it, are these like related to the site concerns, or...
Related to the site concerns that we talked about. 4260 Culver Road, St. Salome's Apartments, is a 39-unit, two-story building. I average about 52 calls per year there. So, with them building an additional 40 units on that property, that kind of set up a marker for me to have to sit down and discuss with them about going forward and the current issues and try to resolve them as we went forward.
Excuse me, chief, you said 52 a year?
Since 2010, 52 calls per year we're averaging.
Once, once a week.
And chief, just, I know what you're, when you initially appeared, you had mentioned you were concerned about access with the fire apparatus and things like that. It sounds like, though, many of those calls are probably medical-related, right? So, some of the concerns are probably different.
Some are, some are.
When, when you come for a medical call, the truck comes also, don't, don't...
A medical call, you get an ambulance and a fire truck and a couple first responder vehicles.
So, so, okay. Continue.
So, when we, we met, we discussed, starting with... So when we, we met, we discussed, starting with the third story, the concerns I had with the third story at forty-two fifty, the proposed building, I had concerns about landscaping and accessibility to the third floor. Only a portion of the building would be facing Culver Road, which would, would be guaranteed ladder truck access. Another portion would have to come out of the parking lot, and there's also a hidden portion where it butts up towards the current Saint Salome's property, that was gonna create some problems. They, they reworked some of the curbing with the proposed building, they've, they're working on a suitable landscaping and soil that would be able to accommodate basically a ninety-six-thousand-pound truck with sixteen-foot widespread, to give us as much advantage point as possible. Does that give us a hundred percent coverage? No, but it's a lot better than what we started with. So it's been very good working with them on those issues.
Is that the new sidewalk that I see on the new map?
Yeah, there was a new sidewalk with a, an entryway more wide, and we had some concerns about that. I also, we wanted to move that up there also in that area, because with the day center being planned, and the busing and the traffic for medical emergencies, and ambulances having to have access for patient removal, we wanted to get closer to the elevator, which is more in the south end of the building. So they were very accommodating by building up that sidewalk for vehicle placements.
Is there a concern about, I see the new drawing with the paths of the, of the trucks, is there any concern about getting a truck in there? My concern is if somebody doesn't pull all the way into their parking spot, that you couldn't get the truck in there?
We went with a radius at that, that is the general radius listed for a ladder truck for the turning, and that's what that, that shows, is that it should accommodate it. Way people park, you go to the plazas, you see how people park, so it's, nothing's guaranteed with how cars are parked, but they're, they're trying to make sure that there is room for that, with that parking area. As far as the third story, my concern wasn't firefighting, it was life safety. We recommend residents shelter in place, we don't want them getting up and running down the halls, most of these residents, they're not gonna be able to maneuver on the stairs, if there's smoke in those stairs. Buildings are built with corridors, which the fire marshal could elaborate on later. We do a rescue in place, which means we have to access sometimes, hopefully it would never happen, but each apartment individually through a window to get that resident out. They're changing some of their landscaping designs as far as trees maturing over the years, that would, my concern was in ten, fifteen years, once these trees blossomed, would it choke out my access to those windows, even though currently it wouldn't do that? They are doing changes with that. Some other concerns that were brought up during our meeting, there, there is a, with the current Saint Salome's apartment, the fire department connection for the sprinkler system is at the main entrance. By taking out that access off Culver Road, that means if we have an emergency at that building, we still have to access that driveway and come through it, but it'd have to come out a roundabout way. Basically, once we put our hose down and laid in there, we're corralling everybody in, there's gonna be no egress for any residents on that property when this is going on. It's a five-inch line of hose that's charged, there's no cars getting out. So we just pointed out a couple of those concerns with them. Even though there is a hydrant on Wacona Avenue, that hydrant is not suitable for that site, it's a smaller main, it's a, it's not a twelve-inch main or an eight-inch main like we deal with on Culver Road. They knew about it, they were actually, they actually offered to check into further about what it would take for changing some of the water lanes for that area.
Can we go back for just a second to the third story and getting people out? You say you'd have to get them out through windows?
Potentially, yes.
Through, with a ladder?
Yes.
How do you do that with somebody in a wheelchair, or walker, or something like that?
You hope that everybody's in good shape that's doing, that's throwing that ladder and climbing up there.
So, so it's not a, it's not a boom truck ladder, it's not a-
Not, not completely, there's certain portions of that building that where the ladder truck would probably not be able to access it, so it would have to be done by ground ladders, which would be-
The parking lot, right?
Uh, no, further in-
Got a ladder truck in that parking lot?
The ladder truck, we feel we could, if we, if we had clear space and we could nose all the way in there, we think we could have a pretty good, what we call a scrub zone, a reach from both sides. It's further on the south side, and towards the apartments, depending on what we have for driveway access for their patio homes that they have to the south of that property, we may have some problems in there with the, with having to use ground ladders. And also, a ladder truck can only do one window at a time too, so if there's multi, the ladder trucks only do one window while guys are throwing ladders to the other windows.
Can you do, can you throw a ladder to the third story and cart somebody down?
You can, it can be done. Some trucks carry longer ladders, in order to accommodate that.
Chief, just a question about the third story access. If the landlord in screening applicants for the third floor were to screen applicants who were mobile, no wheelchairs on the third floor, you know, something like that, would that calm some of your concerns? I mean, assuming they can do that, that nobody in walkers, nobody in wheelchairs are on the third floor?
Not, not, not really, people are people, whether, whether they're immobile or not, they still have to be assisted out a window, whether it's-
So the concern about wheelchairs and things like that, that's not really the concern, it's just the fact that there's a third floor?
It's just the fact there's a third floor we have to remove them from.
All right, thank you.
Just a couple of other things, just to dispel, no nets, we don't use nets, I don't know where that came from.
That was just the last meeting.
Oh, just so you know, we don't use nets though. Right. As far as the parking, like I told Mark and Tom when we had our meeting, they're, they're trying their best to accommodate me, I do have concerns still, I don't know, you know, they provided me with plenty of studies showing me the opposite, I just have the concern that when that emergency does happen, based on, who knows if it's during the day, if it's ten in the morning when everything else is going on, and I got medical motor buses and everything else in there, where am I, you know? Hopefully it never gets to that, of those fifty-two calls, I'd probably say about ninety percent of them are medical-related at that facility, but there are times when there's multiple fire-
I mean, on the average, one or two police cars show up, and then an ambulance and a-
Well, no, the incident they're talking about was a special circumstance that we had there.
Okay.
So, that, that four police cars is not normal for that facility.
What about your response with your guys? You, you, the truck goes, ambulance goes?
A normal medical response will get you one fire engine, one ambulance, and one or two first responder vehicles.
And you have a concern with space?
I, I have a concern if, during the bulk, if, you know, busy hours and stuff, that I just don't know, I just, I'm, I have a concern with it. Like I say, they, they provided me with a lot of information that's, to dispel it, but from experience with that parking lot and stuff, I do have concerns, yes.
Now you add a full fire, you're gonna add how many more vehicles?
Full fire, all bets are off, it doesn't matter if, if it's the current parking lot or the proposed parking lot for a full fire.
In a structure like this, seeing that it's probably built with fire-rated materials, has a sprinkler system, and has a corridor system with doors that shut that are fireproof, how likely is it that there would be a full fire consuming the entire structure?
Hopefully not very likely, but this is being built to residential code, and the fire marshal can expand on that a little bit more as far as with the sprinkler system there, so it's, the likelihood of a full fire is, we're hoping, never, is there a chance? There's always a chance. Any other questions for me?
Yes, chief.
Yes, chief.
When we were talking about this at the firehouse, as recently as yesterday, one of the, one of the concerns was that the third story was a game changer, you know, and that, and that had a lot of implications to it.
Yes, it does.
It does, it means probably a greater likelihood of mutual aid coming in?
Yes.
Which creates additional staging problems. I was gonna ask you, that fire yesterday over in Birchwood, was that a second story?
Where the fire was?
Yeah, the house. But we, we didn't need a, I don't know, I wasn't on the call, do we have, did we have an aerial come in of any kind, or?
The aerial was delayed and we canceled it because it was reachable, it was a second story that we could handle with our ground ladders.
Oh, but it was gonna be delayed anyway.
Right, there was an aerial on the assignment, but it was delayed, and then it was canceled.
So even though we do have a possibility of mutual aid, it's not always guaranteed that they're gonna be able to get there.
Correct.
It's another thing, that's one of the reasons this third story kind of bothers me.
Currently, the, our mutual aid aerial is out of service, so we have to go to a third district, who is actually on another run, so we had to go to a fourth district.
And that also adds to additional time?
Yes.
Getting to the scene, that type of thing. I was chief back, I don't know, thirty-three years ago or something like that, and it was, it was much easier back then, because we didn't have some of these tall buildings. And I remember when Saint Anne's built that tall tower, maybe it was in Saint, wherever that tall tower was there on Portland Avenue, the key word there was burnt toast, because you were, Ridge Culver, the fire department, was always running over there because somebody burned the toast and to set off an alarm and that type of thing. So you do get these kind of things that happen, they're inconsequential most of the time, but burnt toast is bad air, and you have to get to it, and all that kind of thing. So to me, adding a third story is, it's an additional problem, and I don't know if the people building this building assume, or would expect the fire district to purchase additional equipment to help take care of that third story. I don't know, if, I don't, I'm not really asking you, because I don't know if you can even answer that at this point, but that's, that's another possibility. There was some mention of additional equipment in the, in the application here. But as the, as a past chief, and I can appreciate what you say with working in cooperation before it's actually built, to solve as many of these issues as possible, or at least have them addressed, so that nothing's a surprise. But anyway, I was, I'm not gonna ramble on about this, I just wanted to thank you for coming and, and your expertise to this, and I, if it gets burning, I probably won't show up.
I just wanted to say, you know, a lot of the discussion we're having certainly is relevant, but I don't want the board to lose sight of the fact that there are certain laws, rules, and regulations that the developer has to comply with, and the fire marshal's here to address the project's compliance with those standards, so, you know, not to, not to dismiss or diminish what anyone on the board or the chief are sharing, I just wanna make sure that we're balancing that with this rules, regulations, and standards that apply to the project from a code compliance perspective, and the fire marshal can certainly speak to that. And it may be appropriate to have him just give us an overview about, you know, circulation on the site, turning radius, the third story, there seems to be a lot of questions about that.
Chief, thank you very much, appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
Yep. Mr. Fire Marshal?
Well, thank you, Greg Merrick, Arundhati Quay Fire Marshal. And my review on this was done for the code. The code is a national standard that's uniform throughout the United States, and we adopted it in New York State. And I do code reviews, I don't do operational, and the fire chief does the operational stuff, so getting the water there, getting the ladders where they need to be, that would be his responsibility, depending on where the fire was and, and how serious it was. When I looked at this, the, the requirements in the code for fire apparatus access were met, the, he mentioned this a residential, we have identified, and we keep identifying this as a residential, but it's a multifamily. So the code changes after one and two family, so when you have a one and a two-family home, there are certain things that you don't have to do, but once you exceed the two-family and you get to a three-family, then there's other things that have to come in, and that would probably, in general speaking, fire alarms, exiting access. When you get to above two-story, you're only allowed to go to three in wood frame, but that's if you fully sprinkler this, put in rated corridors, which is a material that's non-combustible, and it provides you with a timeframe to be able to access, and typically, a sprinkled building would be a one-hour fire-rated corridor, so it would take, you have one hour for a fire to burn in any one of these units before it would generate enough energy to, unless a door was left open, to come out into a hallway and travel the building, and hopefully by then, it would be knocked down, or the sprinkler would have done its job. And when you get above three stories, and that's probably why they didn't go here, then you have to go to even more, you know, more restrictive materials, non-combustible, concrete block, stairways, and things like that. So when I did the review, I looked at the locations of the hydrants, they were within compliance, I looked at the radiuses around the building for fire apparatus access, and that was in compliance. And so this was a site review I did, I didn't really get into the construction of this yet, but I did note in my, my review that it would require a fire alarm system, it would require a fire sprinkler system, and then it would have to meet the other codes. Did I answer any questions? Did you have any other questions?
Personally, do you have a concern with the overall access to this building?
Personally, I do not, but again, I, I look at the code and, and there's always a problem with every street.
Well, but again, it, it, you know, just-
I don't have a problem with this.
Looking at it, in my angle, it looks like it's awful tight, and it's, and-
When, when the code looks at these things here, first you're, you have a main road out in front of both these buildings, and the Wacona Boulevard may be a little bit far out for the access to the, the first building on the east side, but on the west side of the road, you also have that Dewberry Drive identified. Then you have the parking lot, and the code is recognizing access as greater than twenty feet of paved, includes parking lots, driveways, roads, public and private, and up to thirty. So you could have fifty, sixty, a hundred feet of parking lot, but we only count the first twenty and stop after thirty, so there's credits for only a twenty, and there's additional credits up to a thirty, and after that, it's, it doesn't matter if you pave the rest of the world.
You know how the, the building at, on the east side has a elbow in it, the bottom part, the south, south side of that building is kind of tucked, it's off of Culver Road, and it's, it's tucked behind the, the existing building, you know, it-
Are we talking about the three-story or the two-story?
The three-story, forty-
On the east side?
Yeah, forty-two fifty, the south side of that building is kind of tucked behind the existing Saint Salome's Apartments.
Yes.
So I, I see where they put the new driveway in to try to get to the center, but if, if, you don't feel there's any concern in access to that end of the building?
Let me ask you this, are you looking at the same map I am here?
Yep.
Okay. You notice there's two circles that are identified as one-hundred-and-fifty-foot radius points?
Yep.
A hundred-and-fifty-foot radius points is where any three-story building would have to reach, or fire apparatus would have to be accessible within. When you add a sprinkler system, that goes up to three hundred, so both these circles are only half the size of what the code requires. So by the code, this would be in full compliance.
So based on looking at the two circles, what you're telling me is you would access forty-two fifty from that driveway to those duplexes south of the building, right?
The ones that are south?
Yeah, in other words, if you-
Oh, okay, the, the existing building.
Right, you'd have to, you've got two circles, you got a, a, one circle that's centered around the parking lot, and then you have another circle that's centered-
Around the driveway.
Around that driveway, where those homes are, where those duplexes are.
Mm-hmm.
So you're, what you're telling me is, that's giving you the reason that, that you have the reach to get the lower end of that building, the south end of that building, I mean.
Well, the code doesn't look at reaches, as maybe you're looking at it, not with an aerial apparatus, because they only go a hundred, a hundred and four feet at max, and that's only up to a seven-story building, so what do you do above a seven? When you have buildings, when they go higher, they're made of different materials, of non-combustible materials, there's different requirements for alarms, sprinkler systems, and we've advanced quite a bit in that field. They have alarm systems that now will reset, so you don't get false alarms, and if in thirty seconds, they- so you don't get false alarms, and if in thirty seconds they reactivate, then they send the alarm to the fire department. If they reset, the alarm is canceled. That eliminates, like, cigarette smoke, um, steam from a shower, things like that. Uh, the bulbs on the fire sprinkler heads are a lot thinner. They go off a lot quicker. They're quick-response bulb or sprinkler head, so they deliver the water at a faster rate than the old systems did.
Anybody have any questions for?
Yeah, one thing, one thing I was thinking about. If your, if, if your code that you go by has information or minimums for, um, mains, water mains-
Mm-huh.
And then just in a nutshell, does this project meet all those requirements for the mains?
The, the hydrants are on the Culver Road. They're within the code. In fact, they're closer to them than what the code requires. So they're adequate. I, um, it was brought to my attention that this main on Wacona Avenue is not on the main, main off of Culver Road, but it's on a branch main, and it's not listed on here the size, so I don't know what that, but a sprinkler system is typically fed with a four-inch, and if that's at least a four-inch, that should suffice for feeding a sprinkler system. But that would be an operational. It, so the code, this is code compliant the way I see it and the way it's been delivered to me.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Yep, thank you.
Appreciate it. Would you like to make any responses?
Before, before I do that, is there anyone else that would like to speak before I close the public hearing? Step up, ma'am.
My name is Jerjana Bondi, and I also live on Wacona Avenue. And I do understand about, you know, I, the buildings are great. We need them. But I am concerned about is trying to get out of Wacona. With the way our house is right now, if Maestrellis is having, um, a Friday night type of a thing, well, and then all of a sudden we have a problem in the, um, in the apartments, then if the access to getting into those apartments is on Wacona Avenue, and you have cars parked on both sides of the street, how do you get in and out? My husband is a volunteer fireman. How many times it has happened where he's trying to get out of our driveway to go to Seabreeze for a fire, and he doesn't, he's having a hard time? So, I mean, now we're gonna compound that and not have any other access to getting into those apartments from Culver Road. To me, that has to be changed. It, it has to be changed, because you're just causing complete chaos. If that can't be changed, then I will put in for, um, no parking on Wacona Avenue, because that is the only way that a fire truck and can come in and out of there and to get into those apartments, or even to protect our own homes. If my house is on fire and there's all this commotion, they can't even protect my house. So, I mean, I'm, I'm very concerned about all of that. As for the buildings and everything like that, I'm, I'm all for it. We need it. We desperately need it. But that is my concern. And if I'm having a concern on Wacona, then we must be having a concern on Dewberry and, and, um, Birchwood. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Is there anybody else before I close the public hearing on this one? Step up, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Jean Biacco, and I just wanted to make a comment on Mr. Paulino's comment about the age of people coming in and how healthy they were. We've had many people come in the building healthy, but they're now on oxygen or using canes or whatever. So I think to look at age is, to me, not something that's, I don't know what the word is I wanna use, but there's a, there's a question to me as to how they come in the building at the time to rent and what they are, you know, possibly a few years later.
Well, just, just to clarify the point, ma'am, just to clarify the point, I was asking the chief if it was the physical condition of the resident or the fact that the person was on the third floor. And the chief responded that it wouldn't matter if a person was in a wheelchair or not. That was not a concern. The concern was being on the third floor. So I raised that question to see if it was the health of the person that was at an issue, or the height of the building, and he said it was the height of the building, not the health.
Okay. The thing I, I see is the age of being fifty-five. There's not a lot of fifty-five and sixty-year-old people coming in that we see, that they're older, and some of them lately have been, they're on canes or, uh, very difficult for them to work, to, to walk, because they're older residents.
Do you live there, ma'am?
Yes, I do. Sorry.
Okay, thank you.
At forty-two sixty Culver, thank you.
Okay, there's, uh, step up, sir.
First of all, you gotta excuse the voice that comes with the package. My name is Steve Unites. I live at forty-two sixty Culver Road, and everybody's saying, "Wacona, Wacona, Wacona." Wacona, there is no parking on the street. Everybody's worried about that. There is no parking on Wacona. They park there, but there's no parking on it. It's, it's ruled as a no-parking street. And, uh, so I don't know what everybody's worried about Wacona for. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Well, uh, again, is there anybody else to speak about this application? If not, I'm gonna close the public hearing, uh, and we'll let the applicant address, uh, some of the last, latest concerns. Sir, Tom?
Thanks. Uh, thank you. Just a couple, a couple of things to, to make comment. The parking lot, parking lot size is, is a very, is a normal parking lot size. It's not smaller or anything. So if you're gonna just put it in your head, if you're gonna access a commercial building through the parking lots, it's basically the same thing. So we've done the turning movements to check that they can get on, get on there off of Wacona and get out. Uh, same with, same with the forty-two twenty-five. Uh, cause we, you know, we need to have appropriate access to get in there, um, and to get, and to access it and exit. Um, as far as the parking counts go, you know, we've tried to give you as much data as we possibly can find on it, um, even to the point of asking other folks that are in the industry, and it really is. So I think you need to kinda put it in the frame of mind that it is for affordable housing. Um, and that, those folks start at fifty percent of your average median income. So you may not have as many cars as, as, as you would think. That's, that, and that is really why, we've done this at the point seven-five many times in the past, and it's always worked out pretty good.
The, the, um, the one resident brought up a good, um, a, a good idea in reference to the snow removal and how they remove the snow there now by moving the cars from one spot to the other. You will, you will, you won't have any extra spots.
Well, I don't think you have that anywhere.
What's that?
I don't think you have that anywhere, except when you have an empty parking lot next door to you. So if you were to go into a regular market-rate apartment complex, there's not, I mean, and that, they uses all the parking that they build. There's not empty spaces. Folks don't regularly move their cars and get a plow and then move them back. You just get a plow, you move your car out, and hopefully eventually that, that space gets cleaned out. Uh, there's not too much, you know, that's the reality.
In a, in a normal, I guess, apartment complex, I would think a lot of people go to work, and then you can clean up the spots. Um, in this, in this particular instance, I think that, um, might be a little tougher to, uh, get everybody to move their cars. And I, again, it's a, it's, it's a, uh, concern, but, uh, we'll leave it at that for now.
Well, I mean, the real, the real part is, you know, how much extra parking do you build?
Well, the problem is you don't have any extra parking. I mean, you, 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 you know, you're-
Well, we, we think we'll probably have, we'll probably have eight to nine extra spaces on it.
Yeah, but you've got, you're gonna have the community building, which is, uh, um, you, you know there's gonna be-
Four people.
Four people working there.
Yes.
You're gonna have your own, your own people working, um, you know, for the office or whatever of, of the apartments. That could be one or two, a maintenance person, you know, two or three. So right there, there's eight spaces, um, that, that, uh, workers are gonna utilize.
Some of those maintenance guys, I mean, so the maintenance folks are in and out, and they can, they can park at the other building, they can park at this building. They got, you know, a service entrance over by the, by the dumpster over there. Um, so there's a lot of different, different ways to, to handle it. We've, we've kinda looked, you know, looked at that to make sure we don't get hemmed in, quite honestly. Um, you know, that's why you'll see that we ask for the point seven-five. We, we provide a little bit more than that. It's really point seven-five plus a little bit of buffer in there. Um, if, if we don't need the spaces, we wanna make more handicap spaces, we can do that and still remain within the zoning variance.
Any other questions from any of the board members? Anything?
Nope.
Okay.
If I can. Parking's starting to drive me crazy now. How many, how many, how many spaces are proposed? Cause I've got a couple of different plans here. Total number of spaces proposed right now?
Sixty-seven.
Forty-two fifty, sixty-seven.
Pardon?
Sixty-seven, sorry, sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven, and those sixty-seven are gonna be shared by seventy-nine apartments?
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Seventy-nine apartments are gonna share them.
Yes, plus the community.
That's, that's less than-
It's point eight-five.
Pardon?
Point eight-five.
Not by my math.
Assume.
It is, by my math-
It's point eight-five, yeah.
By my math, it's point eight-five spaces per unit.
Okay.
So, and if we, if we, if we actually park with what we've been seeing out there at point six-two, um, that is, so seventy-nine is point six-two. So it's, it's forty-nine spaces. Sixty-seven.
Okay.
That gives me, that gives me close to eighteen spaces extra.
Okay. How many of those spaces are gonna be dedicated to handicapped accessible on the Saint Salome's side?
There's, uh, one, two, three, four, six. On all of it, there's, there's seven.
Those two are-
There's, on the other side, we don't have it striped out, but there's three at the front, there's five at the front entrance across the street.
If, if you were to add the work, workers that might be there, or, or the potential of them being there, you really don't have point eight-five spaces. You have-
No, no, but if, if we use it, if we use the point six-seven, the way they're parking right now, point, point six-two, we have, at sixty-seven spaces, we've got eighteen extra spaces. So I'm, you know, I'm hedging about a little bit that we're not gonna, we're not, you know, if we really only need sixty-two, we could cut, I mean, I'm not gonna cut another eighteen spaces out of here, because-
How many cars do you currently have for the thirty-nine units?
They have been, so they've been averaging- Sorry.
About twenty-five, twenty-six cars. Twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-five. Based on your- Based on-
They've been averaging about twenty, twenty-four cars in that parking lot.
About point six-two.
Twenty, twenty-four cars in the parking lot, yeah. That's what the average is. There were some times where we're, you'll see, you know, like twenty-six cars and twenty-two cars, but that's-
And those are cars by, owned by residents?
No, those are, however many cars are in the parking lot. We, we counted it, uh, morning times and afternoon times, see if there was a peak.
Do you know what the number of cars are owned by residents in the thirty-nine units? No?
We did not go in there and try and say who's a resident, who's an employee, because we figured even if they were working, they needed a space. We treated them all equally.
Again, it brings up if a caregiver or a, um, physical aid person-
That, that's really why we counted it like that, because you might not, no, that's why we were looking at different times of the day to see if, uh, you know, if we had a, a, a bolt, you know, like a, a bulb at like noon time, or we had a really early morning that was, with a bunch of caregivers maybe in at once. Um, so we could try and see how the distribution was.
Again, I, um, I just think we're short, but on both, on both sides of the street. Okay, uh, anything else you wanna add?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, then we'll take about a ten-minute recess, right? A little more than ten minutes. We'll be back at nine o'clock. A little more than ten minutes, we'll be back at nine o'clock.[387.43]
And that this board would vote to have it reappear as a item for a public hearing at the, at its April, at the April meeting. And so if, Rob Brenner will jump in if I've missed, missed anything related to that.
Right, and the only thing I was gonna add, just to simplify it, essentially what you're doing tonight is authorizing the public hearing to reappear on the agenda and be advertised for next month. And the reason we did that is it's been a number of months since the project was before this board, and we wanted to be sure that the public knew that it was gonna be taken back up.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, um, let's see who's still left from Harrison Terrace. Are they still here? Nope, they went home. And Rudman Road, they still there? They went home. So we'll start with, uh, we'll start with Culver Road. Now, this is an unlisted action, um, and there are a handful of variances that they are looking for. We should start with, uh, going down this list, and we've got a variance cheat sheet that was nicely put together, Tom. Does anyone care to start this off? I guess we'll do 225, 4225 is the...
Mr. Chairman, before the board takes action on the variances, we should go through the seeker review process.
I got that somewhere. Seeker environmental assessment form was the impact assessment. Do I need to read all of the...
You don't. The board has before it a sample Part Two and Part Three in draft form that was prepared by town staff for your review and consideration in connection with this project. The draft Part Two and Part Three covers both 4225 Culver and 4250 Culver.
So do I need to make a motion on approving the seeker?
So you would need to entertain a motion for a determination of significance, either a negative declaration or a positive declaration. And then you'd need a second, you could discuss if there's any comments or changes to the Part Two or Part Three.
Okay, so do we have a declaration from a board member, either negative or positive, right, on the seeker environmental?
I will make a motion that based on the Part Two and Part Three forms that were submitted, there should be a negative declaration of no impact.
I'll second that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nobody absent, or one absent, I'm sorry. Or no, we didn't have an absent, because we have a fill-in, so, alright, and nobody abstained. Motion carries? Carried?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I hate to interrupt, but you said we have a fill-in. I don't know anything about that. Was he introduced earlier?
I apologize. Ryan is our fill-in. He's, he will be filling in on days that someone is out for any reason.
Oh, okay.
Um, Ryan, what's your last name?
Uh, Travis.
Well, welcome.
Welcome, I apologize.
Thank you.
Should've introduced you earlier on. Thanks for that.
I just, I saw this new person going, sitting here going, wait a minute, that doesn't look like Jim. Who's, who is it? So, good to have you, thank you.
Not as good-looking as Jim.
Um, okay, so, just, if you could, do we need to make each, um, each variance separate?
You don't. And maybe, what I would recommend doing is reading them all out, and perhaps we should take one property at a time, so we could recite the address and then call out the specific variances that are on the table for consideration, and then see if there's a motion, and then some discussion.
Um, let's start with 4225, which I believe is the west side of Culver Road, the two-story building. Um, is any, would anybody like to make a motion?
You gonna read the variances for that?
Yep, we can go over these variances. Um, there are, and I should get the map back out here, so help me out. We've got a front yard on Drewberry, which is, um, required by the zone is a 50-foot, um, setback. We're requesting a 15-foot setback, so the, the building is gonna be almost up by the roads on both Culver and Drewberry. So the deviation of that code is 35 feet. The second variance is the side yard, which faces Culver, which is kinda the front of the building, but, um, again, it's not considered the front of the building, it's considered the side yard. That is a 25-foot required by code. They're asking for the same 15-foot, so there's an 11-foot variance. There's another side yard, which is, that faces Birchwood, uh, the west side of the building, and that also has a 25-foot code, 12-foot request, or, uh, variance, and they're looking for, um, or I'm sorry, 12-foot request, and it's a 14-foot variance.
And just as a point of clarification, I think it's the, uh, the variance request is the greater of 25 feet or the building height, which I think here's 26 feet. Um, so the code requirement is 26 feet, and they're requesting in the first instance of...
They're requesting 15 feet.
15 feet, so it's an 11-foot variance, and then 26, down to 12 for a 14-foot variance for the second one.
And then we go to the rear yard, which is a 50-foot. The rear yard, I believe, is, on the spot that's the far north of the building, the furthest north part of the building, the north corner, and a request is a 10-foot, and it's, uh, it's 40-foot deviation, so it's, uh, they're looking for a 40-foot, uh, deviation, a 10-foot variance from a 50-foot requirement. The parking situation, um, again, do we do this separately, or are we all gonna do it once, or we can break 'em up separately if there is an issue?
Uh, if there's, if there's a motion to pass them all at once, we can certainly do it that way, but if we need to break 'em up, we can do them that way as well.
Okay, parking is, the required by code is two spaces per unit for 60 spaces. This particular, um, cheat sheet that I have says 23 spaces, but it's actually 24, I believe, right, Tom?
This, well, we didn't have it shown as yet.
Right, 24 spaces. So the deviation is 1.25 space per unit. It's .75, um, so less than a, a space per unit. And the last one is the lot area. Uh, by code, it's 3,000 square foot per unit, or 2.07 acres. Uh, this, they're requesting 1475 square foot per unit on 1.16 per acre, and the deviation is 1,525 square foot per unit. So in other words, these are gonna be apartments, not 3,000, uh, 3,000 square foot townhouses or condos. Alright, those are all the variances for that one. Do I hear a motion from anybody? And that's, okay, alright. Um, I guess I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion on this one that we approve the variances, although I don't really like the parking situation on this side, but we approve the variances on this building. I don't believe, um, it's going to be a, I'm gonna get my notes out here, I don't believe it's gonna really affect the character of the neighborhood. Uh, I think it'll actually help, because I think the buildings are, um, a good-looking building. They've proven that they put up a nice-looking building. Uh, I think environmentally, I don't believe it'll affect the envirom, the environment on it. I don't, um, it, this is a self-created problem, because obviously they're trying to do a development that's, uh, has, uh, costs that they need to, cost versus, uh, income that they need to worry about. Do I think it's substantial? Yes, I do think it's substantial, but not enough to stop the project from going forward. So I, um, I believe I met all the criteria.
Yeah, and just for the folks in the audience and the folks watching at home, with respect to area variances, it's a balancing test of some of the factors that the chairman alluded to, so you don't necessarily need to satisfy all of them to meet your burden for an area variance.
Um, I made the motion, do I hear a second?
I will, I'll second the motion, and I'll just note, um, the findings, additional findings that the fire marshal and the fire chief were both, they both talked about access. None of them, I don't believe anyone had any issues or concerns about access to 4225, including on Birchwood, um, so I would just note that on that one in particular.
Mr. Chairman, um, I would like to also see a snow removal plan, so that, um, the concern of the residents are here to, to not only push the stone aside, but to remove the snow, um, especially during, um, extreme weather. What's their plan? Have that submitted? Uh, they'll have to do it now, whereas that has part of the...
So condition should be a s-s-snow...
Removal.
Removal?
Not just clearing, but removal.
Subject to review and approval by town staff.
My purpose there is to, um, provide the additional safety needed during, during inclement weather, fire and emergency vehicles.
Snow removal plan subject to review by town staff. Any other conditions for this building? I'd like to make my own condition, can I add the condition? That we, that in the event, again, towards snow removal, in the event that they need to, um, eliminate some green space to add parking spots, that they don't necessarily have to come back to us for approval, that the additional, um, spaces in that parking lot could be utilized, the center, the center green space...
So they wouldn't necessarily need to come back before this board for approval, but they may need to go back to the planning board, um, just for a simple amendment to the approved site plan. So the variance that you're granting for the number of parking spaces that are proposed, if they construct more than what you're authorizing, they wouldn't need to come back to the zoning.
So I don't need to make it as a condition?
No, no.
Okay, alright. Um, okay, um...
Was it, excuse me, was the snow removal to be reviewed by town staff or approved by town?
The plan.
Pardon?
The plan had to be reviewed by town staff.
Review it, okay.
Yep, okay.
Yep.
So did we, uh, I made the motion, Mr. Polino seconded it. All in favor say aye.
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 Okay, do I use the same form for the second property? And am I doing this right? Alright, okay. Okay, going to 4250, which is the, um, east side of Culver Road. I'm gonna list the, like I did before. Uh, side, side Culver Road, side yard, um, this is the side that's facing Culver Road. It's required for a 25-foot or building height of 37 feet. The code variance, they want 15 feet, so it's a 22-foot deviation. The east side line, which is, um, which is the line, I would assume facing the parking lot, 25-foot, uh, or building height of 37-foot, the code requ, um, requires 25-foot, uh, they're asking for, um, 24-foot, um, and based on the height of the building of 37 feet, it, it is a deviation of 13 feet. And that's the east side line setback. The rear yard, which is the south line, which is, um, very south point of the, uh, building, 4250, um, the required code is 50 feet, they're requesting 14 feet, which is only the very corner of the building, um, the majority of the building angles, um, angles up, so, again, we're just looking at the very point of the building, um, and we're looking at 15, um, again, requesting 14 feet, so it's a 36-foot variance on that rear side lot line. The parking request is, um, similar to the other side of the street, two spaces is required per unit, um, uh, and we're looking at 67, they're requesting 67 spaces, um, so that, so that there is a, and the math isn't done here for me, so...
Is this for one parcel?
We're, instead of two spaces per unit, we're down to .75 spaces per unit.
Setback? For what, the setback? No, the parking.
Okay.
The parking is owned, I think, or there's an easement.
Any questions there?
Um, just, I'm, I'm a little confused here. There's two separate parcels, right? The parking, there's actually zero parking on the parcel in question.
Yeah, and there, there would be a parking agreement in place to allow for shared parking across the parcels.
Alright, I just wanna make sure of that.
And then, um, the last variance is, well, not the last variance, but the, the second to last variance, is a lot area variance of 3,000 square foot, uh, units, uh, per, per the acreage of 2.75 acres. We're, they are asking for 1,250 square foot units on 1.14 acres. Uh, the variance is 1,750 square foot per unit. So in other words, these units are gonna be, uh, 1,250, um, square foot apartments versus, uh, again, 3,000 square foot apartments. The building height of, uh, 30 feet is the, the required by code, they're looking for a request of 37 feet. It is a seven-foot, a seven-foot, um, variance or deviation. So, those are all the, um, variances for this particular pro, property. Do I hear a motion for this one?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we grant the variance as applied for, based on the following findings. First, I do not believe this will have any negative impact on the environment. Second, I don't believe that this, uh, structure, considering what's across Wakona Avenue, the more re, uh, retail, I guess, commercial, I don't think this is going to change the character of the neighborhood in any way, um, especially considering the fact that the town rezoned this to accommodate this. Um, I think that the variances that are being requested with respect to the setbacks and stuff are minimal, um, and, uh, just because of the position and whether or not this is self-created, um, as we've always said, self-creation is not a reason to deny the variance, but, um, to the extent it is self-created, it's partially because of the unique location of the property. Um, I would add some conditions, though. Um, there is a legitimate concern about access to the third story. I don't know if this is something that will be outside of our, uh, authority, but to the extent there are apartment units on the third story that would be called to access by, uh, emergency responders and the fire department, can we request that the property owner slash landlord include a statement to people on those floors acknowledging the fact that they're on the third floor, and, uh, some kind of a disclaimer, some kind of a disclosure to these people?
Yeah, that, that type of condition would be beyond our authority, unfortunately.
Okay, then I will not add that condition to it. Um, you know, buyer beware, I guess, but, uh, and I would also note, um, the addition, some findings that we did hear from the marshal and from the chief, both saying that this complies with code, that the trucks can get access, that the property owner did allow the 16-foot access in the, on the east side of the property, um, to get them that access that they're looking for, um, based on the numbers they provided for the parking while it seems rather counterintuitive. Um, the findings or the studies performed by the county, and then the studies of the information based on Home Leasing, which is a very reputable company, um, that, uh, those numbers suggest that there will be ample parking here, even though it's less than one per unit, and, uh, there's been no information provided to us to suggest that those numbers aren't accurate or wouldn't apply here. So based on those facts, um, I think that, uh, we should grant the variance.
If, um, if I hit, uh, parking height, do I just, uh, oh, no.
Mr. Chairman, I, I have one more recommended condition, just because there is shared parking across the parcels, we may want to include a condition, um, that the .85, uh, space per unit ratio that was referenced across the two parcels and represented to the board is what's gonna be maintained, uh, is something that's, that's consistently maintained for these properties, just that way it's not diluted if there's any future expansion and they build more units or something like that, or reconfigure units.
Agreed. Okay, so the condition of 4250, um, how do you wanna word it? Share?
So, so this will be something in our, in our decision that we'll, uh, we'll work on tying to both properties, but the shared parking, uh, ratio that was referenced of .85 spaces per unit shall be maintained, uh, for this property and for 4225 under a shared parking agreement.
Excuse me, 4260.
I'm sorry.
260, right. Shared parking ratio .5 shall be maintained?
Mm-hmm. And, and my concern in recommending that condition is just in case there's future expansion, I wanna make sure that ratio, uh, doesn't get diluted.
Mr. Chairman?
With, uh, I'm sorry, yes?
One, one of the citizens' concerns was the parking, uh, I think is beyond the scope of this property, and I'm not sure what could be, excuse my voice, stated so that we can increase enforcement on Lakona Lodge and, um, I think Drewberry was the, of the street, so that, that access to the property and access to the neighbors could be kept clear. So I'm not sure what is in our purview or outside, I think is outside the scope of this, but we can maybe address the, uh, the town on this, so that the town can add an additional enforcement, additional, um, resources to make sure that, uh, those, uh, those, those roads are kept clear.
Yeah, so, uh, to your point, it wouldn't necessarily be an appropriate condition in approval resolution here, um, but from a town enforcement perspective, it's, it's certainly a good point and one that the town should look into.
And as town staff, we'll make sure that we share it with, um, the appropriate departments, um, to be sure that it's, um, enforced.
I, I personally, uh, I'm not convinced that the, there is enough parking. Uh, you know, some of the other setbacks or the other parts of this variance, I have, um, no issues, I guess, uh, now that the, um, chief had talked about getting access to the third floor, um, but I do have a concern with parking and overall access, um, getting in and out of the, um, roads, um, the side street, um, with trucks, buses, and, and cars, and the, and the, uh, people that live there. So, um, I, I, um, again, we need to probably break it up, because I will, I will vote one way with the other variances, but...
So there's a, there's a motion on the table, was there a second?
No, not yet.
No.
So you could see if that motion, uh, gets a second before you entertain breaking it up.
Okay, is there a second on, Mr. Polino?
I'll second it.
Okay.
And then you put it to a vote.
Alright, all those in favor say aye.
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 Um, ayes were... Alright, all three of you guys, okay?
And Andre, four.
I'm sorry, can we do, I'm sorry. Can we do a roll call, so that I can get this correctly, for the record, please?
Okay, um, aye, Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Intini?
Nay.
Mr. LaPerry?
Nay.
Mr. Polino?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Nay.
Mr. Upson?
Aye.
And Mr. Travis?
Aye.
So the ayes have it. Um, and that's, uh, so we don't break up the...
No. Four to three.
Alright, um, and that's it then, right? Okay, so then we move on to the next one, or the other two here, let me just...
Harrison Terrace?
Um, yes, Harrison Terrace was first. Okay, tight, um, Harrison Terrace, uh, three Harrison Terrace, uh, it's a type-two action. Um, this is the one with the, um, shed. We've got two variances, the shed being in the front yard, and then the, um, the distance from the, uh, from the main structure.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman...
Please.
...that we grant the variance as applied for, based on the following findings. First, uh, this is a very unique property, very unique, uh, parcel, and, uh, the applicant is asking for, I believe, the, the least restrictive, uh, the, the smallest, rather narrowest, uh, variance. Um, it's not self-created how this property is situated, there will be no negative environmental impact, and putting the, the shed there of the type which the applicant has, uh, presented will not change the character of the neighborhood. Um, so I, I would say that we grant it with the condition that he install a shed of the type that is presented in the packet on a page. Tuscarora Structures... type that is presented in the packet on a page. Tuscarora Structures, um, west elevation, facing Harrison Terrace Road. It is a, a, uh, house-like structure with two front doors on it that will match the, uh, roof and the, uh, structure of the property. I would note that there's nowhere else for this homeowner to put a shed, except for where he's putting it, and he's putting it closer to his house to have it farther away from his neighbors, which makes it really the least, uh, the least intrusive way to do this. So I'm, again, I move that we approve it with that condition.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion granted. Shed to match the house, um...
Per application.
Per application. Okay, moving along to the last one. Rudman Road, Rudman Drive.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve this request for this variance.
This is a type-two action, by the way, sorry.
Especially because of that.
(laughing)
Uh, based on the following findings. First of all, um, this, uh, is gonna be a beautiful structure. It's brand-new. It'll be placed at a decrepit place, so it's gonna enhance the neighborhood, uh, not take away from it. Uh, there are no, uh, alter, alternatives for this. There's no sense in trying to rebuild the bu, other building, 'cause it's, it's beyond any usefulness. Uh, this, the request, uh, is not really all that substantial. They're just looking for a, a couple of feet in the overall height of the main part of the building, so it's not that substantial. I don't think anybody who walks down Shore Drive would say, "Oh, that house is two feet too high." No, it's not, it's that minimal. Um, would be no adverse effect on the environmental conditions of the area, and, uh, is it self-created? Uh, only from the standpoint that they're trying to make something good out of something that's no good anymore, and I think, uh, what they're gonna invest here will be a, a plus, you know, for the town of Veron de Coi, especially that neighborhood.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And I think I've got everything tonight, right? Okay, all right, so that adjourns our zoning board meeting.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
And I'll second it. I'm sorry.
Second.
All right.
Nay.
Nay, nay. Thank you, and I apologize for not introducing you.
No, hey, man, it's all good.
Welcome to the board.
Thank you.
Yep.